Yes, we're all set.
Stand by. Five, four, three, two, one.
Welcome to the November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. This is Select Board Chair Veneeth Hamavati. I will be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please, please respond in the affirmative. Dan Zorko.
Here.
Andrew Lamb.
Here.
Mark Gold.
Here.
Josh Levine.
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons.
Here.
Mike Barbieri.
Here.
This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is convened in person and via Zoom webinar, as posted on the agenda and Town's website, identifying how the public may join. There is no chat or Q and A function. All of the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please raise your hand when we get to the comments section of the meeting, and I will call on you to approach the microphone. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute, unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. If anyone in attendance is recording this meeting, please announce yourself now. All right, we will now begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we will begin with Select Board announcements. Huge thank you to all the volunteers, residents, and staff who attended Town Meeting last week and ensured that the meeting ran smoothly. If you are unable to attend the meeting, a recording of the live stream is available on the Long Meadow Community Television YouTube page. The minutes will be posted to longmeadowma.gov as soon as they are available. The Long Meadow Fall Leaf Program will continue with curbside collection on Saturday, November twenty-third, and Saturday, December seventh. Long Meadow Clear Leaf Bags are on sale at Big Y currently. The drop-off areas in the meadows off of West Road are open eight AM to five PM seven days a week through December eighth, with a recycle, an recycle center pass is required. For additional information about the leaf program, please visit longmeadowma.gov/leafprogram. Town of Long Meadow Municipal Offices will be closed on Thursday, November twenty-eighth, and Friday, November twenty-ninth for Thanksgiving. Okay, and after that, we will move right into Board and Committee interviews, and we have one interview tonight for the Board of Assessors. If you could please begin with your name, address, and why you're seeking reappointment.
Good evening, Richard Foster, twenty-nine Captain Road, Board of Assessors. Good question why I'm seeking reappointment. Actually, the Board of Assessors is likely one of the better committees in town as far as the actual reaching out and touching the residents, even so much more than even Select Board activities, because, you know, we get to go one-on-one, understand the plight of a person, sometimes help them, sometimes not help them, but I thought it was very rewarding. I was, I was requested to join the committee. They were having trouble getting people on, and I, I enjoyed the stay on it. Looking forward to serving on it again.
Great. Any questions from the Board?
Come on, Mark.
Just glad you're dressed for the occasion, Richard.
You got one, you got a question. You know, there was one thing I noticed when, when I got on the Board in its hindsight. I made a statement, I don't know if you're aware, but you actually take a ten-session course on the Internet to be a Board of Assessor, and you have to pass a test. And I thought when I completed it, it was a shame that it wasn't a mandatory requirement of the Select Board, because the information there was very pertinent, more, much more in detail than what we got into in the budget and our discussions in the, in the actual boardroom when we were actually talking about the tax base. I always still recommend it. Very, very informative. I thought I knew most of that stuff after being on the Board for as many years I was. I didn't. I came, I was confused on some items. It's, it's very enlightening to go through that, that part of that training.
Okay, great, thank you. There's nothing else from the Board, then you'll hear from us when we vote on your appointment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And we've got appointments from our previous meeting to vote on. I'll entertain motions on that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to appoint, onto the mall one motion. I'll point John Skypek to the Capital Planning Committee for a three-year term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Point William Welsh to the Community Preservation Commission for a three-year term expiring June thirty, thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Appoint Teresa Yasu to a Council on Aging Board of Directors for a three-year term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. And appoint Bob Abell to the Historic Commission for a three-year term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, great, thank you. All right, moving right along, we will now move into resident comments. Do we have any resident comments? Anyone on Zoom?
I do not see anyone on Zoom.
Okay, great. Then we'll move ahead to Select Board comments. Anybody have a Select Board comment they'd like to make? Mark?
He'll start down there. That's right.
Oh, yeah, just want to congratulate the Boys Cross Country Team on winning the D-two State Championships this past weekend. I think they had four, four runners in the top twenty. It's pretty incredible, so I just want to say congratulations to everyone.
Great, thanks. Mark, you're next.
I have a few comments. The Recycling Committee began work on a rollout of a plan for the automated recycling system. That's part of the new upcoming trash hauling contract, and with the money approved at the special town meeting to purchase the recycling bins for each household. The communication rollout plan is now being developed with an implementation target geared for before the July first, twenty twenty-five required start date. So they're hoping to have these purchased, installed, and, you know, distributed, and the program rolled out in advance of when we need to do it for contract. But that's really work by the Recycling Committee, and they were responsible for doing when we went to the thirty-five gallon barrels, and that seemed to work fairly well, and I expect this to work the same way, so I'm pretty optimistic about that. I just want to follow up with a couple of things. They've been, I'd gotten a couple of emails and calls about water bills that went out last week. I think there were some things on, on the Facebook or whatever, and I think that the town needs to make people understand that the significance of the cost increase from the city of Springfield, you know, we get blamed for a lot of things, and maybe we are responsible for some of this, but, but clearly there was a significant increase in the cost of water from the, from the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission, and I think there needs to be a way to communicate that. Couple of kind of housekeeping things. I, I'd sent a note to our chair, but I just want to reiterate that, you know, that we need to go through the past year of executive committee meetings. We don't do that in open session, but minutes do need to be issued. We haven't had executive committee meetings, minutes issued in quite a while. I also want to kind of reiterate my request to review the recommendations of the Charter Review Committee. Those were some unfinished business, and I think we should either, we should look at it, if nothing else, just to put them to bed rather than, than just leave, leave them hanging. There's a, a whole bunch of people worked pretty hard on it and made some recommendations, whether we follow them up or not follow them up. I think that we, we, we need to take some action on those.
Great, thank you. And so just to touch on a couple of things that you mentioned, Mark, the executive committee, or the executive meeting, sorry, meeting minutes, I think we were supposed to discuss that during our executive session we just had. We just ran out of time, but I, I agree, and that is something that we will talk about. And then the Charter Review, I purposely delayed that to occur after Town Meeting, just because I didn't want there to be any kind of confusion in that conversation, but that is something that we're, we are going to address. I know that you and Lynn had discussed some of this, and I think we're going to revisit it, look at it, and, and I think in the new year, we'll talk about it at our Select Board meeting. One other thing, I know that we mentioned this in Select Board announcements, but just wanted to also thank the Town Moderator for the great work at Town Meeting last week. I think we had a great Town Meeting, great turnout, great questions and participa, participation from our residents. I think that this was the first Town Meeting where Lynn did not have to speak, and I, and I think my wife said it was great to see that Lynn got a, got a break from not getting a pop quiz on every aspect of her job for, for once in front of the whole town. But, yeah, I want to thank everybody, Town Clerk, for, for a good Town Meeting. After this, we will now, I guess, go right into Town Manager's report.
I just have a question. I don't know where it's appropriate. So at the Town Meeting, the Town Meeting created municipal light plant, and is the process for that, does that come with a, an enterprise fund, or do we now have to go before a Town Meeting and create an enterprise fund for that? I know we had, we created, we create enterprise funds through the Town Meeting, and if we want that separate, we talked about it at the, and I think the Warren article talked about an enterprise fund, so I don't know if that is automatic, or is it something that we need to do separately?
So we are receiving a lot of guidance of, on municipal light plants from our Town Council, and so we will be discussing that.
Add that question.
At a, yeah, at a meeting, but they have, are very familiar with this, have done this with other towns, and they will be able to guide us, yeah, through that, so. But, yeah, we will probably do that at a, one of our December meetings. Oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, oh, Dan. I was just gonna say, so I echo what you said about Town Meeting and, and the Moderator. I thought she did, as always, an excellent job, and also just wanted to say thank you to the veterans in town. We had a couple veterans events. So we had a breakfast over at the Adult Center that, that I had attended, also right at the Town Green as well, with Earl Godfrey, and we had a lot of kids that attended as well. I know that they had the day off from school, but it was nice to see the, some of the troops that were there, some of the kids, and the color guard, and just a overall really good, good event, so just thank you for that.
Great, thank you. All right. All right, I think you're up now.
Thank you. So tonight, I am happy to start off with another grant award. We have a Department of Ecological Resources called DER Culvert Replacement Grant. The DPW submitted this application in their DER Culvert Replacement Training Site Initiative. This is overall the, through the DER Stream Continuity Program, which awarded $2 million to seventeen municipalities. And again, we were, we received one under the Culvert Replacement Training Site Initiative. This aims to build a network of road managers skilled in replacing culverts that meet mass stream crossing standards. It's going to include training opportunities, site visits, and technical assistance. The town was selected to receive a grant to support replacement of a culvert on West Road Trail over Long Meadow Brook. The grant award was for $75,000, which is the full amount we requested. It's going to help us conduct field data collection to replace the culvert on West Road Trail in the Fanny Stebbins Wildlife Refuge over Long Meadow Brook, which is a cold-water fisheries resource and priority habitat. And I know the Select Board knows this, but for the public, we have settled the two DPW legal cases that were set to begin jury selection on November thirteenth. This involved disputes over the land-taking and environmental contamination at the one-seventy Dwight Road parcel. This is the home of the DPW garage and offices. Settlement marks the closure of the land-taking case filed in 2019 and the environmental cleanup case filed in 2021. Legal counsel for the Town of Long Meadow informed the Select Board that both parties agreed to resolve the longstanding disagreements through a settlement. Under the terms, the previous landowner will provide a payment of $400,000 to the Town of Long Meadow, and, and the previous landowner has agreed to drop his lawsuit against the town, which sought further compensation for the property taken. And in exchange for this, the Town of Long Meadow agreed to dismiss its lawsuit against the previous landowner regarding environmental contamination at the site. The rest goes on to just summarize the outcome there, but once the release is ready, it'll be brought back to the Select Board for a vote. The Energy and Sustainability Committee has launched a survey for their Climate Action Plan. This is being done with the help of Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. A survey is out there to gather input to better understand the needs and priorities of Long Meadow, its residents and businesses, to reduce the impact of climate change and create a climate, climate action plan for our town. Long Meadow, as we all know, has endured several severe weather events in the last few years, costing in the realm of $60 million plus to homeowners' insurance companies in the town. The cost to municipalities are borne by all of us, and our community would like your help to reduce greenhouse gases, which contribute to climate change. The survey takes about five to seven minutes to complete and is for Long Meadow residents and businesses only. A flyer with a QR code is attached below, and paper copies of the survey are available at the Long Meadow Adult Center. And an update on the Long Meadow High School Pool. In August of 2024, while the facility staff and pool vendor were gathering pricing for the replacement of drain covers and resurfacing of the high school pool, some red flags were noticed. Upon further investigation, significant work was identified to be done to the pool's drainage system to guarantee the safety of swimmers and the pool's compliance with the Virginia Graham Baker Act. Designs were prepared by the town's contractor, and work kicked off on October first. By early November, the work to replace, I'm sorry, the work to clear and replace piping and valves was complete, and new drain covers were installed. However, while checking the electrical bonding of pool components, some higher resistance readings came back on some of the ladders, and it was noticed that the starting blocks had been moved from the shallow end to the deep end at some time in the recent past and had never been properly bonded. The town's design contractor then prepared a spec for the electrician to run a new bonding wire and attach all components to it. The last component of the pool infrastructure repair work was to electrically bond the new sump system. Last week, the entirety of the pool's pieces requiring bonding were checked for continuity, and the majority of them were not bonded at all or had fluctuating resistance readings. This indicates broken connections. Of course, this bonding wire loop is encased in the pool deck, and, which is likely from the nineteen seventies. It's hard to tell when, how, or why the bonding is broken. All options were reviewed by the design contractor, electrician, facilities director, and the high school certified pool operator. Unfortunately, the next step is to run a new bonding wire within the pool deck to each item requiring grounding. This means saw cutting into the tile and concrete, approximately one and a half inches around the entire pool, running a new copper bonding wire to each pool fixture, ladders, chairlifts, starting blocks, diving boards, et cetera. It's expected the pool will be down until at least the new year. Design work is in process and will be expedited and then bid out for construction. And then two other quick updates that I did not provide in my written report here. One is to just emphasize and call attention to the burn, the ban on outdoor burning. We're in serious dry conditions right now, and any, anything can be combustible at this point if you're doing an outdoor burn, so please do not. And also just call out in the Fire Department Monthly Report, just want to note that it is Chief Dearborn's last monthly report. He retires on Friday. There will be a change of command ceremony at three o'clock at the Fire Department to change command from Chief Dearborn to Chief Rigney. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions, comments for Lynn on the report or the department monthly reports? Josh?
I just have a question for you on the, one of the last things you said. If, I, I was driving around town recently, and I smelled smoke, I called the Fire Department. I couldn't figure out where it came from, though. Is it, is there anything people should do in particular if they smell smoke? Should they call the Fire Department?
Yes, call the Fire Department. They'll ask for your location, they'll, and if they get enough calls, they'll be able to pinpoint it more closely. Sometimes it's just a wood stove or a pellet stove. Sometimes it's an actual outdoor burning situation.
Great, Dan?
Regarding the, the pool, I know I had reached out to you from, some residents had reached out to me about when, you know, they were going to open up the pool. So when you said this is the start of the new year of 2025, so it's pushed back probably a couple months from what we had thought, and, and maybe I missed it, but where, are we using another pool? Is the, the high school going to leverage another pool?
Yeah, the high school has been working on agreements with other community pools to be able to have the high school swim team use those facilities.
Thank you. Mark?
Yeah, I, I think it was one of the month reports about the Triton Trolley that was running out of funding, funding was, was heading for. You know, that, that come up a few times at the Pioneer Valley Assembly meetings I'd been at. And PVTA is, as most people know, now getting funding from the state to run buses for free. So people at home who don't know, PVTA buses are no, no fee right now. But I guess the question is, should we just go back to the old paratransit system? Triton Trolley replaced paratransit, which is frankly, the short end, the dial-a-ride. If we're not going to have a Triton Trolley, Long Meadow is included in that as a, as a convenience, something helpful, but if it's no longer helpful for our residents, it might be something we want to look at, getting back Long Meadow residents into the dial-a-ride program and then looking for the no-fee system. I don't know where that, how we follow up with that, Lynn, but if you want to, I can also talk to the PVTA about it.
Yeah, it was in a weekly email update I provided, so it's, the information is very preliminary right now, so I don't think there's anything that needs to be done yet. It's just something I'm keeping tabs on.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, anything else? Okay, our dog hearing is set to begin at seven thirty, so let, we'll skip ahead and try to take care of some other business here over the next six minutes. After the hearings, we have approval of meeting minutes, so I'll entertain any motions to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve two sets of minutes. The first set of minutes is from the October twenty-first Select Board Meeting, and the second set of minutes is from the November fourth Select Board Meeting, and I'll approve them as issued.
Second. Any further discussion?
I have to abstain on the second one.
Okay, so.
You want to vote them separately?
Yeah, let's vote them separately.
Okay, I'll, I'll move on the, that we approve the October twenty-first minutes.
Second. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, great.
No, we approve the minutes of the November fourth meeting.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Abstaining? All right. Ratification of the Fire Chief contract, so this is something that we discussed and reviewed in executive session, and now we will vote to ratify it here in open session. Anybody have any comments that they would like to make, or, you know, maybe explain, is anything you'd like to explain a little bit before we vote on it?
Sure, yeah, I'm happy to. So just so the public's aware, this is a contract for the incoming Fire Chief Rigney, who's replacing Chief Dearborn on Friday after a change of command ceremony. Chief Dearborn will, will retire, and Chief Rigney will take the helm. This contract is effectuating that appointment as Fire Chief. The contract largely follows what's in place for Chief Dearborn with changes in compensation, and there's also been a change regarding compensation in terms of pulling the Fire Chief off of the non-represented pay scale. This was a recommendation that had been made in the wage and classification study, and this is our first opportunity to do that with a contract, and going forward, we'll look at doing something similar with successor police chief contracts.
Great, thank you. Any, anything from the Board on this?
With promotion, I'll move that we approve the contract for Fire Chief John Rigney.
Second. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Great, congratulations, Chief, or soon to be Chief Rigney. Next up on the agenda, we have the Fiberspring Intergovernmental Agreement. Town Meeting was actually, you know, obviously just last Tuesday. After Town Meeting, it was sent over to our Town Council. They're still reviewing it. The review has not been completed yet, so we will not be discussing it or voting on it tonight. We'll be talking about it at our December second meeting. Okay, so we've got about three minutes left. Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
I'd like to just ask a question, because it's, it's come up. Can somebody explain to the public as much as anybody else what the process is for bidding, for whether it's a contract for, for fiber optics or whatever it is, if, if we need bids, or why we don't need bids for that?
Yeah.
I don't know if now's the time or sometime later, but I know it's come up, and it might be appropriate for people to hear that.
Yeah, so as, as part of the, I think it's with the creation of a municipal light plant, you do not need to follow regular procurement. I think procedures, I believe that that's what, what it was, right?
In terms of this intergovernmental agreement? I don't know about that, but I do know that because Fiberspring is a subsidiary of South Hadley Electric Light, which is a governmental entity, we don't, we can just file a government, intergovernmental agreement. It's like a intermunicipal agreement. And so, because it's a relationship between another municipality, essentially, we don't have to go out to bid for this.
Yeah, thank you, Lynn. Yeah, so can we start the hearing right now?
Yeah, by the time you finish opening and all that.
Yeah, okay, all right. So Attorney Chaplin, can we have you come on up?
I like the new setup, I just don't know what we're doing.
It was, it was not, it was not planned.
It's by necessity.
Technical difficulties.
All right, great, thank you so much for joining us, Attorney Chaplin. We are going to have a hearing, nuisance dangerous dog hearing. Can I also get a show of hands of folks that are here as parties or here to witness for this? Okay, thank you. Okay, all right, great, thank you. And Attorney Chaplin, I think we usually let you kind of tee us off here.
Absolutely. I typically give a little introduction. Obviously, the Board's done a number of these hearings at this point, and obviously the animal control officers at all the hearings, but for members of the public that might be watching or that might be here for the first time, just to give a little bit of a background, in Massachusetts, we have this setup where if there's a complaint about a dog, if there's an attack, or if there's a situation that somebody otherwise complains about, the statute actually designates the Select Board in the town as an authority to investigate the complaint. And the way that the hearing can go is it can go really one of three ways. The Select Board can find that based on what's reported and based on what's, what comes to light at the meeting, that, one, that the dog fits within the statutory definition of a nuisance. The second possible outcome is that the Board finds, based upon the facts, that the dog fits within the statutory definition of a dangerous dog. The third possibility is that the Board finds that neither of those things is the case, that the dog is neither a statutorily dangerous or statutorily nuisance dog. If the hearing authority, the Select Board, finds that the dog is a nuisance dog, the statute says in a very vague way that the Board should, not should, that the Board shall, or must, order some type of remedial measure. In the case of a nuisance dog, the statute doesn't say what that is, so the Board has to be creative. In the case of a dangerous dog, the statute enumerates seven different things that the Board can do. The statute says the Board has to do one or more of those things. There, so basically leashing, confinement of the dog, a muzzle order is possible, order, ordering that the owner purchase insurance up to a certain amount against future injuries, order that the dog be neutered or spayed, order that the owner identify the dog either with a chip or some other means, and in certain cases where the attack's very serious, the Board has the ability to order that the dog be humanely euthanized. And, and obviously, if that's what the order is, you can't really mix those with the, with the other things, it's pretty final. So what I typically do at this stage is I read the definitions, because they, they are sort of intricate, and it is a little dry, but it is at the heart of the hearing, and that is what the Board needs to find. So we'll start with a nuisance dog. There's three ways that a dog could be a nuisance dog. The first one is that by excessive barking or other disturbance, the dog is a source of annoyance to a sick person residing in the vicinity. The second way a dog could be a nuisance dog is that by excessive barking, it causes damage or other interference that a reasonable person would find disruptive to one's quiet and peaceful enjoyment. And the third way is that a dog has threatened or attacked livestock, a domestic animal, or a person, but the threat was not, or the attack was not grossly disproportionate as a reaction under the circumstances. So those three categories are, are a nuisance dog. There are two categories of a dangerous dog. One is a dog that without justification attacks a person or a domestic animal, causing physical injury or death. And the second way that a dog could be a dangerous dog is that a dog behaves in a manner that a reasonable person would believe poses an unjustified imminent threat of physical injury or death to a person or to a domestic animal. There are a handful of exceptions, basically circumstances or categories where a dog cannot be deemed, deemed a dangerous dog, and those are a little, a little overlapping, but I do, do want to go over them. So solely based upon either growling, barking, or barking. So, solely based upon either growling, barking, or both growling and barking together, you could find that that dog's a nuisance dog, but you can't by statute find that that dog's a dangerous dog. You can't base finding of dangerousness on breed. So, for example, you know, someone has a pit bull or a rottweiler, that fact in and of itself can't be the basis for finding that a dog is dangerous. Obviously, a pit bull or a rottweiler could be deemed dangerous, but it would have to be based upon what happened and what's reported to the board, not solely the breed of the dog. And the final exception is if you have a situation where a dog was defending itself or was defending a person, and it, and the reaction wasn't grossly disproportionate under the circumstances. Also fitting into that category is if the person who was attacked was a trespasser, either into an enclosure where the dog lives, or the property where the dog lives. You can't find the dog dangerous based on that. You could find the dog to be nuisance dog, but you can't find them dangerous there. So, with that, with that as the background, that's the charge to the board this evening. This is, you know, set by statute. I've had other boards ask me, can we delegate this to somebody else? No, this board has to hold this hearing. The statute doesn't get specific in terms of how the hearing has to go, so we treat it kind of like a court hearing, kind of like a magistrate's hearing. While we don't strictly apply the rules of evidence, I swear in every witness, under the pains and penalties of perjury, to tell the truth, we ask that people only testify to what they've seen with their own two eyes, heard with their own two ears. You know, that way, the board can perform its statutorily designated function of finding out what the facts are, discerning whether, based on what's reported, the dog is dangerous, nuisance, or neither, and then do what the board is required to do under the statute after that.
Great, thank you so much, Attorney Chaplin. So, with that, I will open up a hearing of the, or I'll open up a dog nuisance, dangerous dog hearing pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws 40, Section 157, and the general bylaws of the Town of Long Meadow, 5301 and 5318. I would...
We should vote on that.
Oh, yeah.
Or make the motion.
Yep, I moved, or so moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, great, thank you. So, Attorney Chaplin, I don't know if, you know, you have any suggestions, but I think may make sense to begin with the complainants.
I typically do that. In this case, I was thinking it might be good to hear from the animal control officer first.
Okay. Marty Lee?
I'll say, because it looks like you've got quite a few people here.
Thank you so much for joining us, Marty Lee. If you could just begin by maybe, you know, familiarizing...
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'm going to summon the swearing first. Could you please raise your right hand? You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing.
Yes, lady.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sorry about that. If you could just familiarize the folks that are watching, and, you know, just the Select Board, too, of the facts of what happened, and then if you could provide, you know, maybe your thoughts or recommendations after, that'd be helpful.
Okay, so, I got a call from, I think my first call came from, I'm not sure, I haven't met him yet. Are you Scott? No, you're not Scott. No, there's a difference. Who's the, the... The, are you whose mother's got bit? No.
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 I'm the owner of the dog.
No, no, I know, so your dog, yes. So, are the people here that were bit, that the mom got bit?
No.
Okay, so, because I haven't met them, but I got a call from them, and so, his name is Scott Alzo. So, I got a call from him saying that his mother had been bit in East Long Meadow. I think she's like 90 years old, she got bit, is what was reported to me. And that, that the person who had the dog took off, this was according to them, that the dog, that the police had traced the dog to belong to a Long Meadow dog. So, even though it was, a bite happened in East Long Meadow, they had to refer it to Long Meadow because the dog lived in Long Meadow. So, there's mass state laws regarding rabies when there's a bite, so I have to go out and quarantine the dog. So, that's where it started. So, normally, I do those quite often, like, you know, daily. I do a lot of quarantines, so it's usually a no big deal. I went out to Richard's house, and Richard was still saying that his dog had not bitten anyone. And so, my concerns then became larger than, more than... Is he to do with the hearing? I don't know. So, my concerns became bigger than the quarantine. My concerns became that this dog had bit an elderly woman, the dog was quickly removed from the premises. If it hadn't been traced by a license plate, we wouldn't have found the dog. So, then a 90-year-old woman would have been told to get a series of rabies shots, which would have been unnecessary, and a lot to put her through. She ended up in the hospital, I think for about a month with C. diff. And that if this happened again, and we didn't trace the dog, so that's why I requested the hearing, because I think there should be some kind of orders so that the dog, so that this cannot happen again, so there's a responsibility. This dog shouldn't be out without a muzzle, or, you know, able to bite anyone. So, I was hoping to hear from all the parties, I know, so you could hear from the other parties. I thought that the people who had the bite happen would be here, but you have the report from East Long Meadow, and you have, that's what happened.
Great, thank you so much.
Just for the record, I never received confirmation if they would be here or not, but they did, the hearing notices were sent out.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board for Marty Lee? Mark?
Thanks for being here. I just want to make sure that what, I think I'm reading for your report. It says narrative for civilian Marty Lee Karamante. It says, and this is from your report, reportedly, Richard Puozzo, a Long Meadow resident, was walking two dogs named Bella, a Golden Retriever, and Ludwig, a German Shepherd, at East Village Place, an elderly facility on Benton Drive in East Long Meadow.
Correct.
One of the dogs reportedly bit Constance Wickman, an 88-year-old resident of the facility, on the butt and drew blood. Reportedly, Mr. Puozzo did not take responsibility for the bite and left the scene quickly. Alice Wickman reported witnessing the bite and taking down his license plate. So, is that, is this report part of your testimony?
Yes, and so, then what happened was, all of that was under East Long Meadows police, because obviously, I wasn't out there. But Scott Wickman, who's Alice Wickman's husband, and it was his mom that got bit, is the one who called me, and then when I started trying to talk to Mr. Puozzo, originally, he didn't tell me that the dogs belonged to Dagmar Childs, but I eventually found out they belonged to her, that's...
The German Shepherd belongs to me, the Golden belongs to him.
So, reportedly, it was the shepherd that bit Alice Wickman. And when I went out to quarantine the dog, I ended up quarantining them both because Mr. Puozzo kept saying that he, that it didn't bite, so then I quarantined them both, because I didn't want to take a chance that if it was one and not the other, and both dogs were there, and so, but they both went under the quarantine, so we know there was no rabies risk. The woman did end up with C. diff, as I said, and, yeah, so I think I've explained everything.
Question about that, medically speaking. When you say that the patient had C. diff, was it evident, was there any medical evidence that it came from the dog? I think that's...
No, so that's, yeah, let me clarify that. That's reportedly, because I'm not a nurse, and I'm not, I didn't see medical records. Reportedly, Mr. Wickman told me his mother, and I think, I'm not, I'm not a medical professional, I think C. diff comes from antibiotics.
That's the most likely risk factor for her?
I think, which were given because she's a 90-year-old with a bite.
Understood. Was it the hospitalization the same as the hospitalization when she went for the dog bite? That she was in the hospital for a month, I think you mentioned?
Yes, it was right after the dog bite. Right after the dog bite is when she landed in the hospital.
It may not be material for the dog.
Reportedly, I have to keep saying that reportedly, because they're not here, and so reportedly, from the Wickmans. My concern was more this dog, the license plate was traced to this residence. When I went out there to do the quarantine, the dog was, you know, acting like a shepherd, protecting its property. So, I mean, that's a very normal way for, but it, you know, you could tell it was a powerful shepherd, barking from within the house. So, my concern is if this dog was to go elsewhere, and this was to happen, and we didn't trace it, we'd be left with a bite that we had no dog, you know, and I don't know if it could do more damage, I don't know, you know, that if I hadn't been able to trace the dog, I would have been having to recommend rabies shots to an elderly woman.
I apologize if you said this, but was it unclear which dog allegedly bit the...
According to the Wickmans, it was the shepherd.
Okay, thank you.
And when I went out there, it was the shepherd that was very agitated at the window, but Mr. Puozzo has, I mean, you can talk to him, he, at least when I was there, was saying neither dog bit her.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for Marty Lee? Great, thank you, Marty. Attorney Chaplin, do you have any recommendations on who we should speak to next?
I would suggest that we hear from the, so I understand the owner and the person who is there are different folks. I would suggest we hear from the eyewitness first.
Okay, great.
So, I believe that's Mr. Puozzo.
So, Mr. Puozzo, if you, if you could please come up to a microphone?
I made a statement to the East Long Meadow Police that day, and they should have a copy of what I said and what I saw.
And we received that copy.
Huh?
We received that copy, we received the East Long Meadow Police Department's report, so, yeah.
Could you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
I do.
And can you please state your full name for the record?
Richard Puozzo, P-U-Z-Z-O.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. So, I guess the most important question is, do you still contend that the German Shepherd did not bite the victim here?
In the statement I made to the East Long Meadow Police, I said, I did not see either dog bite the woman. I know they were barking as they came up, and they saw that the women had the walkers and whatever, and they were barking, but I did not, in that statement I made, I did not see the dogs, either dog, bite that woman.
Okay. All right, any questions from the board for Mr. Puozzo?
You have that statement.
We do, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Josh?
How old are both of the dogs?
Say what?
How old are the dogs?
The dog Ludwig, the German Shepherd, he's got to be three years old.
No, he's not three, yeah, he's three next year.
Okay, three next year. And the Golden is going to be five.
He's five, he's five or somewhere.
Or, sorry, so, we'd have to swear you in and everything if, yeah, if you're going to make a statement. And how big is the German Shepherd?
He's got a, he's good size, I mean...
He's about 80 pounds.
Sorry, ma'am, we can't pipe him.
80 pounds, she's right, 80 pounds.
Do you want to swear them both in, so they could...
Yeah, maybe that's a proper idea, yeah.
She's the owner. I found that out second, because she was in the hospital.
I wasn't there. I was in the hospital, and I just got released on October 12th.
All right, we'll have to swear you in first, ma'am.
Could you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
Yes.
And could you please state your full name for the record?
Dagmar Childs.
Can you please spell that for me?
D-A-G-M-A-R, and then Childs, C-H-I-L-D-S.
Thank you. Okay, great.
And so, Ms. Childs, you were saying that the dog is 80 pounds?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And not three years old yet?
No.
Okay. Has the German Shepherd ever had an incident like this before?
No, he's been in training since he was six months old. As a matter of fact, the summer when we went to Europe, he went on a three-week program for canine. We didn't want to just put him in a kennel, so he went to training. Now, I've taken him to Home Depot. He goes out to Bliss Park all the time. He loves to sit there and just watch the kids. We walk him there. He's always on a leash. He has not shown any aggression. Since I've been home from the hospital, I've had the visiting nurse, OP, and the physical therapist there, and people in and out of the house, he has not barked, he has not shown any aggression at all towards them. We have a cleaning lady that's come in the last year, and, you know, dogs don't, they're friendly.
Have, have the two of you reviewed the police report from East Long Meadow?
He did, I did not.
I have.
And so, you know that the police officer said there were puncture wounds that were fresh?
He, he was at my house.
Did you read the report that said that he saw puncture wounds that were fresh?
Yeah, they were bleeding.
They were bleeding.
I did see that, but I was taken back by, because he showed me a picture of a thigh that had open, open to the flush, like the skin was taken off. He showed me that picture, and I conceived at the time that that was the bite, but to this day, I've been at the police station numerous times, the police told me I had to write a report, and they gave me all, they won't allow me to talk to them. And he has a picture supposedly, allegedly, of that dog bite.
And we haven't, we haven't seen the picture.
I don't think you have the right to see the picture.
Why wouldn't we? Because, I mean, we're the ones that are being, and my dog is the one that's being accused of being vicious. Why wouldn't I want to see the picture?
If...
And as far as Richard told me, there was no tearing of the cloth, or whatever, and the woman wouldn't cooperate, so he was getting in the car, and he was going down to the police station.
I made a statement to the East Long Meadow Police.
All right, sorry, sorry, let's keep some order here, so...
Assuming that's the police officer telling the truth, and I'm, I think that's a fair assumption, where do you think those bite wounds came from, or the injury?
They had to come, I mean, I, I did not, I made a statement to the East Long Meadow Police.
I understand what your statement was.
And did you read my statement?
Yes, I did, and I'm asking you a question.
And I did, I did not see the dogs bite that woman. They were barking, and as I said in that statement, that, you know, they had the walkers and whatever.
Is it possible to get sworn in on his side, and it might help mediate a little bit between you guys and him? They get a little defensive, and I think it might help a little bit.
I understand where you're coming from. With that said, since you weren't an eyewitness, we're just going to stick with the, which is the folks who are there.
It's going to take a long time, man.
Can I ask you a question?
Go ahead, Andrew.
Sir, perhaps, I'm sure you would acknowledge the possibility that although you did not see the dog actually make a bite, it might have happened, but one thing that I might want to ask you is, how close do you think your dogs got to these individuals? From what you saw?
I was coming from the power line, walking my dogs, and I cut through their shrubby in the back of the rest home, and I cut through, and as a walkway, I can show you the pictures, and then I cut across the grass, because they were barking like heck.
I'm just actually asking, how close do you think your dog, from what you actually saw, got to these individuals? Like, a couple feet, closer?
Couple feet, yeah.
Very close?
Okay. Dan?
So, when this incident happened, it sounded like you left the scene after. So, I'm, I guess I'm trying to understand, if nothing happened, why would you be leaving the scene abruptly?
In that paper, that the statement I gave to the East Long Meadow Police, I put the dogs in the car, I shut the door, then I went over and I talked to the two women. The daughter, or daughter-in-law, I guess, said that your dog bit her mother-in-law, but as I stood there, I did not see the ripped pants or anything of that that would indicate, but he was the dog, he was as close to her, but I did not witness, as I said in that statement... he was the dog, he was as close to her, but I did not witness, as I said in that statement, my Ludwig biting the woman.
But in, in that situation, I mean-
It's conceivable.
If, if, if someone said a woman got bit by a dog, wouldn't you want to go try to help the woman and try to-
I did, I went over, I put the dogs, I just said this, I put the dogs in the car, then I walked over to the women, and, and I said, and, and she wrote in her thing that I asked to take her pants down, and that's, you know, that's just, that doesn't go anywhere. Because that's in the statement. And I went over to inquire, and I didn't see the pants ripped, and she didn't show me the wound, and she claimed she put her hand in there and came out and it was all blood. I, she didn't do that for me, and, and I can't say I saw, I obviously didn't see that. But I went to them after, trying to find out what the situation was. Dogs were barking. And, but I put a statement out to the East Long Meadow Police, and you probably have a copy of it.
Any other questions?
Move we close the public hearing? Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, great, thank you. Yeah, you all can move back from the microphones. Okay.
Me too.
Oh, yeah, you too, thanks, Marty Lee.
Okay.
And one other thing.
No, sorry, we've closed our public hearing. It's closed, okay, it's closed. Okay, so Josh, do you want to start off?
I have a question for Attorney Chaplin. The fact that, so dog clearly in our jurisdiction. The fact that the incident occurred out of our town, does that change anything with our consideration here?
Uh, no.
Okay.
The complaint's been made to the board, but it died, this is within your jurisdiction, so everything that the dog has done is, is fair game. Okay. Thank you. And, and, and sorry, it's Marty Lee, maybe I shouldn't have had you step back.
Yeah, surprise, usually they have like-
Your recommendations, well, I don't want to, you know, keep you around more than, we need to, but your recommendations were muzzling the dog when-
Yes, it's, it's a really hard one for me, because I, I hear Dagmar saying the dog is, is good when you're around, but you weren't around.
Right, it was my companion dog.
And, so, I guess in my mind, the biggest concern for me, or a very big concern, is this, to this date, not acknowledging that the dog was there. An elderly woman says I've been bit, and there's no acknowledgement of, "I'm so sorry, how can I help?" My concern would be a future incident and the dog going missing. So I don't know what to do with that. I don't know whether it's that the dog needs to be unmuzzled if it's not with its owner, or needs to be muzzled if it's taken out of the house. Can leave that for you guys to decide, you have lots of thoughts usually on. And I know dogs act very different with their owners than they do with-
Can I show you a video of this?
No, I have no, I have no doubt that possibly that's true, and dogs are like people. They can like three hundred other dogs. I understand, Ms., I understand, but what I'm saying is dogs can like three hundred other dogs and people, and just decide not to like one. So since this dog, for some reason, unprovoked, bit this woman, now we have to look at not allowing this to happen again, because we don't know what the dog's not gonna like or like. There is the, there is the added piece of, it may well have been because the owner wasn't there. The fact that, you see where I'm coming from?
Yeah, no, absolutely, no, thank you, thank you so much.
Muzzling at the very least.
Good, Mark.
I think, I think-
Mr. Puozzo, sorry, we're, this is now discussion of the select board.
I think, you know, the first step, I believe, in our adjudication of this is to determine whether the dog is a nuisance and/or dangerous dog, and based on the dog actually biting somebody, which, from the reports we've read from both the East Long Meadow Police and from our, our dog warden, appeared to have been unprovoked, wasn't the dog, you know, defending its territory or anything like that, I, I believe we should find that the dog is a dangerous dog, and I make that motion.
Second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just on that, our last dangerous dog hearing, we had a lot of talk about, because the nuisance finding does give us a lot more leeway on what actions we can take. But I, like I said last time, I, I agree with, we, we should, when a dog has some dangerous tendencies, I think we should find it to be dangerous. And, and I, I think that, again, the options that are available to us, I, I think are sufficient, so I agree with you.
I agree with Josh's. Deeming a dog as a nuisance gives us more options to mitigate, but semantics do matter, and if we are not deeming a dog that's biting other people dangerous, then, you know, that, that I think, that kind of throws everything out, so I also agree with, with what Josh said.
Did the motion name the dog specifically, since there was two dogs there? Yeah, I'm sorry, I guess-
Ludwig.
This would be the German shepherd Ludwig. Thank you.
Anything else?
Quick question. So when you visited the home, is there, like, proper fencing in place in the yard?
I did not go around. Mr. Puozzo was quite defensive when I had visited, and the dog was very agitated because his owner was not there. So the dog was, was really kind of going crazy from within the house. So he, the, the dog just came up to the window, I just saw the dog through the window.
The yard is updated. Sorry, Mr. Puozzo.
So, so, at that point, I was trying to do a simple quarantine, and then, yeah, so, again, I, I don't know if the dog would have been different if, if this Childs was there, if she was walking it out, but he was not able to put the dog safely on a leash to come see me.
Anything else? All right, all those in favor? Okay. So now that the dog has been deemed a dangerous dog, the next step is to determine what orders we will, you know, institute. What we've talked about is ordering that the dog be muzzled when the dog leaves the home. Is there anything else that folks feel like should be ordered, or want to discuss?
I would just first say that I would be in favor of that, at the very, at the very least, when muzzled when not at the home.
And then, you know, if we want, if you want to refresh your memory on what the orders can be, it is an attachment, the second attachment-
Is there any way we can swear back in, Ms. Childs, just because I'd like to ask her, just, I guess, if, if that's what we order, if we, if we order a muzzle, it would still be up to you to, to realize that if you weren't going to be there, or you-
Having my second surgery-
Yes, and I-
Screwed up, and the dog was stressed, yes, I agree that.
So, so I, I just need you to kind of know that, like, in the future, that you don't want, you know, you don't want, I can tell this dog means a lot to you, and it's your dog, and you're seeing the dog act different around you, so I just want to know that we're not back here, like, the dog, you, you're gonna have to be more careful if you're-
You haven't met the dog.
What?
You haven't met the dog.
Yes.
You don't want to see videos of the dog.
Okay, I don't know if this could be resolved.
Okay.
Actually, this morning, she's trying to-
Yeah, I really am trying to help, I'm trying to make it so that you don't get your dog taken away, or, I'm trying to think of how can we make this so that, so it works, so that the dog's not-
I think I should clarify, I'm talking, I was suggesting support for the idea of being, of muzzling with or without the dog's owner present, just to be clear.
Sir, Mark, did you have something?
Yeah, I guess, I, I'm also concerned that, from the reports we read, which may differ from what we heard tonight, but the reports we read, there appeared to have been a, and I think Marty Lee alluded to this, you know, leaving the scene of the dog bite, that made it a little bit more difficult, and I, I think that's really problematic for me today, but potentially for the town going forward, should this happen again, and I, I don't know what our, what our potentially, potential remedies are, you know, in, in terms of, you know, whether it's the donor, the dog's owner, or another person with the dog, but I, I think we need to address that as well.
So maybe, maybe muzzling outside of the home, and maybe only be, only leaving the home with the owner, but I don't know how you can do that, because if, because if something happened to the owner, then somebody has to be able to remove the dog out of, I, I don't know, but I-
I don't think we have the capability to do that under the statute.
Oh, yeah.
Not expressly.
Yeah, I mean, we, I know we can always find a way, but I, to me, muzzling is, I'm also very disturbed by leaving the scene, and it shows a lack of responsibility, and it's, but, I hate these dog hearings, I wish we never had another one, but we gotta do what we have to do to make sure this doesn't happen again, right? To me, muzzling and the leash as the minimum tensile strength of three hundred pounds, not exceeding three feet in length, to me, should accomplish that. We also didn't ask, but the dog should be neutered if the dog is not.
Yes, he is.
And microchipped.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Is the dog microchipped?
He's microchipped and certified.
Great.
Should you make your motion?
Make your motion.
Yeah, I'll move that the German shepherd Ludwig is required to be, to wear a muzzle when outside of the house, and be restrained by a leash or chain or other tethering device having a minimum tensile strength of three hundred pounds, and not exceeding three feet in length, and that the dog be microchipped and neutered, if not previously accomplished.
Second. Any further discussion?
Just to clarify, that also means in the fenced-in yard? Outside the house, does that mean?
I wasn't recommending that, because the dog isn't having a problem escaping. Has your dog ever escaped?
No.
I've never picked, I mean, I've been dog officer for like twenty years now, and I've never picked this dog up, so.
No, I would say outside the premises, being outside of the property owners.
Homeowner's property.
Homeowner's property, there you go.
All right, so we had a second, any further discussion?
All right, yeah, just, don't let it happen again. Muzzle, I know that Marty Lee follows up on these things. If, we haven't had a dog come back yet, I don't know what we would do if it happened again. And I'd, if I could tell you not to walk, as part of this order, if I could tell you not to walk at elderly facilities, I would, but we can't, but be aware of your surroundings.
I wasn't walking yet.
All right, all those in favor?
Yeah, on the record.
All right, great, thank you. All right, thank you all for joining us.
All right, thank you.
All right, go.
See you next, see you in two weeks.
All right, and then I think the folks here for the next hearing are waiting outside.
Do they have minutes of this meeting that I can-
The board will publish minutes.
Okay.
All right, so. So I will move to open a public hearing for a liquor license violation. Second. All those, or any further discussion? All right, we've been in motion to open the public hearing. All those in favor? All right, great, thank you. All right, so this is in regards to a liquor license violation of Lola's Restaurant. We'll begin with Officer Turekowski?
Yes.
All right, great. Just, yeah, grab the microphones. Okay.
Good evening.
Thank you, so we will begin by, I guess swearing all of you in at once, so. What's the language here, just the same, or Mike, you want to do it?
Yeah.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth in the matter before the hearing?
Yes, I do.
I think that's pretty close.
Perfect, that's perfect, great job. All right, thanks, Mike. Okay, Officer Turekowski, if we could begin with you, just kind of describe what happened
Absolutely.
in the incident.
Good evening, Mike Turekowski, Lieutenant, Long Meadow Police Department. Unfortunately, Officer Almeida is very upset, he can't make this meeting. It's his report I'll be reading from, but I approved it, so I can ask and answer any questions that may come forth. All right, the following is Officer Almeida's report. On Thursday, October 24th, 2024, I, Officer Almeida, conducted business, established alcohol compliance checks for the town of Long Meadow. I received training on October 11th, 2023, on the Liquor Control Act, taught by Investigator Christopher Temple of the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, the A-B-C-C. An underage operative, twenty years old, voluntarily agreed to assist the Long Meadow Police Department, the L-P-D, as an underage buyer. Prior to the start of the operation, the underage operative was given a safety brief and a review of established A-B-C-C guidelines. The safety brief was conducted by Lieutenant Turekowski. The underage operative was read the guidelines, he understood and signed the document. The operative was wearing a blue t-shirt and khaki shorts. The underage operative was given a preliminary breath test, a PBT, after the operation, showing a point zero zero percent result. Lieutenant Turekowski provided the operative with a twenty-dollar bill, which was used to conduct the transactions. The operation began at approximately 4:30 PM. Of the thirteen establishments, one was a failure, one was closed for the day, and one business claimed to not possess an alcohol license. The following establishment failed, the restaurant group, Lola's Tacos, Tequila and Oysters. At approximately 5:00 PM, the underage operative entered Lola's and sat down at the bar. He proceeded to ask for a Bud Light, but was informed that they didn't sell it. The server then recommended a Michelob Ultra, the operative was then served the Michelob Ultra. The server took the twenty-dollar bill, processed the transaction, and produced the operative with change. At this time, I entered Lola's and met with the manager, who was identified in this report. She was advised as to the reason for my visit, informed that they were just served to, served alcohol to a minor. The server was also identified, again, it's mentioned in the report. I spoke briefly with the owners, and they were informed to expect a follow-up from the town of Long Meadow for serving alcohol to minors. That is essentially the end of the statement relating to Lola's.
Great, thank you so much, and if you all could just, thank you for joining us tonight, and just introduce yourselves, so we know who we're talking to.
I'm Ralph Santinello, one of the owners, owner of Hostel in Long Meadow, and also Lola's.
Benjamin Boylan, attorney with law from Abic and Wilson, representing the licensee.
And Michael Presnel, one of the owners of the law.
All right, great, thank you all. I'll open it up to the board, if you all have any questions after hearing the police officer's report. Yeah, Josh?
I, I remember when you got the license, we told you there was gonna be compliance checks.
Yeah.
We're disappointed to see it here. Is Ashley Thurston the manager of record, A-B-C-C manager?
No, no.
All right, who is the manager of record?
I believe Mike is, yeah.
Okay, how often are you on the Lola's premises?
Pretty much six days a week, pretty much all the time. I was there at the time, I was in the cellar, in the office. I came up, and I ended up talking to the officer, actually.
Are Ashley and Michael, were they tip-trained?
They are, and I do have certifications that they are tip-trained. It was an unfortunate oversight by, by Michael, he feels horrible about it, the, the server. The policy is to card everyone, and unfortunately, he didn't follow the procedures. So he was disciplined as a result of it, and compliance is number one, the number one thing that they strive for. Their other restaurant did successfully pass, just down the, the way. It was, again, an oversight by someone who's been working in the industry for over ten years for the same company, and has been a valued employee, so they apologized for the oversight, and are taking corrective action to make sure that that doesn't happen again.
Mark?
Can I ask what corrective action's being taken?
Well, they, they were retrained to make sure that they're checking everyone's ID, no matter- Well, they were retrained to make sure that they're checking everyone's ID, no matter how old they look. That's something that everyone is taught in, through the TIPS training program and that they instill in their restaurant. And again, it was just an unfortunate oversight by this particular employee at a time where, honestly, there wasn't anyone else in the, in the bar. It was just a complete oversight on his behalf.
Anything else from the board?
There are always oversights, but we keep seeing them, unfortunately.
Mark?
Yeah, I guess, I guess my question for Michael, for you and for Ralph is, do you, do you have any issues with the report that we heard from the police officer?
No, no.
So I mean, we're not disputing the facts, we're just.
Not, not at all, just like, no.
Throwing yourself on the mercy of the court.
And I spoke to Michael, the, the server, he's been with us, he worked with us at the federal. You know, we've had a liquor license, one, or now we have three of them, one in Connecticut, four, actually. We still have the federal. For over 22 years, we've never had a violation. So he was very disappointed. I, you know, frankly, it was embarrassing, I mean, to, for this to happen. We're absolutely embarrassed, I think is the word.
Lieutenant Turekowski, is that correct? There's never been a violation at these, at these restaurants in Long Meadow?
So Lola's, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's been one, less than one year.
March, it's been March, the posto, it's been five years.
I think Mike would probably have a better.
Nothing on my record for Posto.
Anything else?
Is the server still employed?
Yeah, he is, yeah. He's, he's been with us for over 10 years. You know, unfortunately, I told him if it happens again, he's going to be terminated because, you know, we just can't take that risk. And they've been told, again, it's in our, it's in our handbook. We teach it, and now, you know, we would remind them, we do what's called a lineup, which is every day before service, we bring all the servers up and line up and go over different things. One of our weekly things that we go over, but obviously, we're going to say it every day now for a little while, but, you know, remind them, he just, he feels terrible, he made a terrible mistake, and really, there's no, there's no excuse for it.
Yeah, Mark?
Do something unusual. You were in our shoes, what do you think the appropriate response is?
Well, I, I think the appropriate response is, given the fact that the, these particular licensees, although this is a newer location for them, have a history within this town and within other towns of running a business that hasn't had any violations. According to the liquor license violation policy that this board has, given the fact that it's a first offense at this location, that a warning is an appropriate remedy or appropriate outcome by the board for this particular incident, given the fact that the individual who did commit the violation is TIPS trained. We have the certification to show that, and again, it was a first time and, and won't happen again.
Thank you. One of my concerns is not just that it was a violation, that it was very early in the, I'll call the liquor license history of Lola's Restaurant violation, but also the location. That, that location has a, very close to our high school, a lot of younger kids there. It's a, really a concern, and I will say that many people, not these folks on the select board, but in past select boards, have been very, very concerned about liquor licenses in areas close to the high school. And so, you know, it's serious, any violation in our town is, as Mr. Levine said, we take very seriously. But the ones that, in the vicinity of the high school are particularly troublesome to me, at least.
Understood.
Thank you. Anything else? Yeah, all right, I'll just add that, obviously, we do take this seriously, but also, I recognize that you all have been in Long Meadow for a long time, and you have, you know, we have not had incidents with you before, and I think the way that you've presented yourselves and spoken about this today shows that, you know, you understand the severity of it and that you've taken corrective actions to, to, you know, make sure this doesn't happen again. So I'm appreciative of that.
Thank you.
I want to say that. Yeah, Dan?
I was just going to say, well, to Mark's comment, I'm not sure what you mean about other board members being lenient on liquor licenses close to the high school. I just don't think, I don't, I don't even know where that comes from, because we, all of us take it very seriously. And for someone like myself, who would go to friendlies where, you know, as a kid, and now there's Lola's there, which I've been a few times, and I can tell you, every, every single time I've been there, I've been carded. Probably because I don't look like I used to, of course, but, but, you know, I'm certainly disappointed because, you know, one of the things, maybe to Mark's point, some of, a few of us on the select board, we like to see these restaurants in town, we like to see new growth. We like to see the, the up and coming of restaurants and places to go to eat, to be with family and friends, and I think that's a good thing. So I'm going to continue to, I'm not going to be lenient on liquor licenses like Mark seems to think, but I'm going to be welcoming to, to new businesses like Lola's. But I also will say, I'm, you know, disappointed that this happened, but I do believe that, you know, you're taking the right steps to make sure that positive change does happen. So I, I hope you do keep your word and that we don't see you here again, so.
Josh?
Yeah, just a couple more things. Fletcher's got a warning last year from us, or maybe probably earlier this year. I was very glad to see they passed their compliance check this time. I hope that, you know, continue in the future, and also just a warning. Your previous occupants of your spot, Ume, since I've been on the board, we suspended them because they got dinged a second or third time. It was either, was it seven days, three days? We gave them three-day suspension. I know that that is, that's a big hit to the business. I'm, I'm unfortunately in Ben's shoes, representing clients on this side, and it's not, I know he doesn't want to be here, and neither do you. So I hope we never see again for this. I'll move that for this liquor license violation, that we provide a warning to Restaurant Group La Uva, Lola's Tacos, Tequila and Oysters, write a, I can't remember the term we used for it, an official warning.
Second, okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, great, thank you.
Sorry about that. And hopefully, we won't be back here.
And everyone seemed to think you were going to hear the dog hearing too. And we'll move to close the hearing.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, so we took care of a few items before the dog hearing, so now we will skip ahead to new business and the MSBA Accelerated Repair Program for Center School.
Thanks, yes. So as you know, we applied to the Accelerated Repair Program when it reopened in 2024. This is for the Center School roof. We were successful at town meeting last week with reprogramming funds that had been previously approved at a town meeting for the roof. The funds will now be used toward the feasibility study that's required for the roof as part of the MSBA process. So this vote here tonight is one of the first deliverables, which is the board action letter and the initial compliance certification. So the select board needs to vote this tonight and authorize the town manager to sign documents related to the Accelerator Repair Project for Center School roof moving forward.
Great, thank you, Lynn. Josh?
Can you just explain how the, the money would play in for what we'd authorize and what may be potentially in our future for paying?
Yeah, to the best of my ability I can.
Yeah, I know, it's up in the air.
So within 120 days, we had to comply with funding, which we've done. We will then be assigned an O P M and designer from MSBA. We do not get to choose. They rotate through a list of approved vendors, and we will just be assigned one. And then we will be paying for the feasibility study with the $695,000 that had previously been approved for the roof. It will not cost that much for a feasibility study for the roof. This is not a, a new school, it's just a roof replacement. And so as we move through the progress, I'll be able to update you further, and then at some point, we will need a funding authorization for the roof itself, but I don't know what that cost is yet.
Mark?
Can you just, what's the projected timing for what you just indicated, including, you know, funding? If, I assume it needs to be authorized by a town meeting?
I believe it's 14 months. This process is 14 months. It's, it's fairly expedited. So just very quickly.
Only in state laws, 14 months.
Yeah, yeah, that's true, that's true. But we've already done the, the funding. That was, we had 120 days to do that, so we'll be sending in that vote. And then a project funding agreement needs to be executed with the MSBA Board of Directors no later than 14 months from our invitation date, and our invitation date's November 1st. So it could move quicker than that, hopefully it will, but I also don't know the timing on the vendors that MSBA works with in completing that, but I'm sure it will meet the deadlines. It just may not be sooner than 14 months.
Just for clarification, the MSBA assigned vendor is the person who does the study, not the person who does the roof?
Right, right. The O P M and the designer.
Right, so at some point, I assume the roof goes out for bid, I guess that's the process, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And, and is there a formal, you know, roof building committee or roof committee that needs to be created as part of this MSBA process there? They're very heavily into that kind of thing. I'm just wondering if we've got to start putting together people to interact with the MSBA, or is this completely administrative?
I will get back to you on that. I'm not entirely sure. There may be a review when bids are received for selection of a vendor, but I'm not entirely sure, so I will follow back up with you.
I'm sure the, the school building committee right now would love to take this on as well.
All right, anything else?
So you need a motion to accept the, the MSBA invitation and authorize the town manager to sign the application?
Yes.
I'll still move.
Second, all right, any further discussion? All those in favor? Great, okay, moving right along, Department of Environmental Protection consent order. Would you like to explain this one?
Sure, so as I've talked about in previous meetings, the, the Department of Environmental Protection has issued a consent order against Long Meadow. This is based on water quality. There's some deliverables in that report that we need to do, that we're, we're actually undertaking now, which is installation of a tank mixer in the water tower tank. But a lot of this relates to the upgrades that are happening in Springfield. And so, as I had mentioned to you before, Springfield has until 2028 to come into compliance. If they fail to do so, then that will be a matter between D E P and Springfield, but we will then need to make every attempt possible for Long Meadow's water to come into compliance through Long Meadow's end. And so this is D E P's consent order that they put us on notice about, and you need to formally accept it, and we'll sign it.
Thank you. Anything else, Josh?
Was there, so we already got a letter, they told us what to do in 2022, and we didn't do it. Is there, I know we're going to do it now, is there, or we kind of did?
Yep.
Is there any penalty towards us, or does it matter that we didn't do it?
If we continued to not do what they had been telling us to do, yes, there would be. But there were extenuating circumstances back in the, then. The conversation over installation of a tank mixer actually started prior to COVID, and D E P gave us a longer length of time to make efforts on a water, water age study that we were taking, doing, sorry. And because of COVID, it changed everyone's patterns, and so it changed water use because people were home more. And so they agreed to let us stall doing completion of that tracer study, and then it, it just delayed everything else. And then we had change and change again in D P W leadership, and so this project did not get off the ground when it was supposed to.
So are we now in a position to be able to comply with this and do it?
Yes.
As much as we can?
Absolutely, yeah. The work on the tank mixer has already started.
Mark?
I guess one of my concerns, Lynn, is not the, the water tank system and the mixer, but it's the, has five deviations that we're, we're somewhat depending upon the city of Springfield's multi, multimillion dollar project to resolve. Do we or should we have a Plan B? I mean, because if it doesn't, it falls back on us. And, and right now, we're, we're doing some work on the water tank, but my understanding is that that's not intending to necessarily address this, this issue.
Right, so if you recall, at last, the annual town meeting in May, there was a capital article for a interconnection study with the town of Enfield. That is a avenue that we're looking at. I don't know that it's actually going to be viable, but we are going to study that. Ultimately, it comes down to where we get our water from, and Springfield's where we're getting it from. So if we are looking to make some other change, or if we're not going to get it from Springfield, we're going to get it from somewhere else, but the other alternative would be installation of our own treatment plant to treat the water that we're getting from Springfield, to try to improve the quality of it. Obviously, everything I just mentioned is incredibly costly and needs years of design and construction, but those are, you know, those are some of the conversations that we do have, just about what happens if Springfield can't meet what it needs to meet, and what do we, what then does Long Meadow want to do after that?
But if the, I, I have every hope that the city of Springfield and their work they put on or the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission more properly, their work will alleviate the issues we have. The question is, if, if by chance it does not, you know, aren't we under a time constraint to, to make this improvement? And, I mean, do we, do we then say, well, now it's 2026, 2027, we've got all the change, the new filter system in Springfield, and we've still got these issues, so now we're going to start with a three to five-year capital program? I know nobody wants to spend money, and we, I don't want to spend it as much as anybody else. But like I said, I think, you know, to have a Plan B that says, if this doesn't work, here's the direction we're going. Conceivably, could A, buy us some time with the D E P, and more importantly, make something happen a lot more quickly to alleviate this situation? And frankly, you know, my limited knowledge of water clarity is, you'd certainly have to put in, you know, something like a, a UV purification system on the water streams coming in from the city of Springfield, which would knock this stuff out of the, out of the lines. But, you know, that's not cheap and it's not quick.
Yeah, and some of what you're talking about runs on two different paths. One is what D E P would require, both Springfield or us to do, and the other is what we decide we want to do, that could be over and above a D E P order. It's prelim, we're, we're too premature to have those conversations yet. We could speculate all day what will or won't work, and I'd, I'd rather wait and see what happens and then follow what D E P is telling us to do right now, which is what we're doing. The work on the, the tank mixer is already in progress, so we're, we're going to meet those deadlines.
I feel like if the Springfield water system doesn't fix our problems, then we would have to start a big conversation with D E P, because they can't say, well, you need to fix your water now. We tried, and we're going to have to figure something out, but it would cost us a fortune. So I agree, we need to have probably Plan B, but I don't think we're, Plan B will have to be after Plan A fails, I think.
I mean, wouldn't, I mean, to Mark's point, I guess maybe Josh's as well. With D E P, I don't want to imagine there's been other towns, similar situation, but it probably would be helpful to get some sort of guidance to suggest, hey, 2028 is when Springfield's going to be completed. If that doesn't work, you know, what's, what's, what, what do we do? I mean, should we be doing something now just in case? Will our, will the measures we're putting in place right now, will those potentially solve the issue? I don't know, but I think it would be helpful to get some guidance from D E P and to see what, what other towns or communities in a similar situation have, have done.
Yeah, we've had conversations with D E P, and what they're wanting us to do is what's in this letter. So I, at this point, I am not in the position to want to go above and beyond that right now, because. now, because it takes years of design and a lot of money, and I'd rather start with what they're telling us we should be doing first, and then go from there. And we already know that the water we're buying from Springfield is coming in, not meeting the thresholds that are required. So to some extent, we can continue to, you know, make all of these plans once the water is well into our system, but in reality, we're buying water that already doesn't meet it. So really, at that point, it's installation of a treatment plant at the entry point that it comes into Long Meadow.
Anything else? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Josh.
I'll move that we enter into the administrative consent order with the DEP.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Great. Okay. Next up on the agenda is our draft FY 2026 budget and capital plan calendar and assumptions. Hopefully, folks had a chance to review this. There's nothing really out of the ordinary from how we usually have this scheduled. We will, at our next meeting on December 2nd, we will do our joint Select Board, School Committee, Finance Committee meeting to kind of kick off the budget talks, and you'll also see attached to the agenda our budget assumptions for FY 2026. Ian, I don't know if you had anything that you wanted to speak to on this, or Lynn, or otherwise I can just open it up to the board for comments?
Sure, I can do a quick summary, if that's all right?
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
So, as you can see, this is, again, very early on in the process, so these are all subject to change. I want to highlight a couple of things, because I feel that they are the most important. So one of them being debt service. As you can see in the assumptions, we're looking to see a small decrease in our total debt service on the year. This is as anticipated as we planned for the middle school bonding in the next year, as we will see the excludable debt will level off through FY 27, which was planned for when our timeframe of bonding was for the new middle school. I also want to highlight the general fund employee retiree benefits. As Mark is well aware, we have our Scantic Valley meeting tomorrow, and we had a difficult discussion at our last meeting due to the fact that health insurance rates continue to rise. Specifically, the town is anticipating an about ninety-nine to a hundred thousand dollar increase in retiree rates, which we have to absorb within our current FY 25 budget. So this is something that we're monitoring as higher premiums continue to impact the valley and impact our residents and taxpayers. So if we look at uses, for example, six out of our seven union contracts are going to be starting negotiations soon. So this is going to be a very challenging year for us in terms of wages, as we are in the midst of our wage and class study and doing the implementation. But we also have the union contracts that we'll need to figure out in terms of funding. So that's something that Lynn and I are both addressing and working towards. Nothing out of the ordinary for sources. You know, we are expecting to see a two and a half percent increase as approved by the board. New growth is estimated conservatively based on prior years. We, I had a discussion with the GFOA, as last week we met with Mass Tax Foundation about net state aid, and there wasn't anything in particular to expect extreme decreases or increases. So I'm not expecting a severe change in our net state aid, but it was mentioned during the meeting that going forward, the state is looking at how it's going to handle its budget in future years, so I will continue to update you if there's any changes. Other than that, as a whole, we're not expecting too many changes in the sources. I'm happy to speak to anything else.
Great, thank you, Ian. And I did want to mention that at the, at our next meeting is when we will vote to adopt the calendar. Any comments from the board? Mark?
I have a few. The first one that concerns me is that the budget basis, the guidance is based on a couple, two and a half percent increase. I guess my question is, is that two and a half percent increase from last year's approved budget at the annual town meeting, or two and a half percent increase from the budget as revised at the fall town meeting? Because we, there's a big difference. There's a five, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar difference, and I think it puts a real, you know, a two and a half percent increase from the fall is more than a two and a half percent increase year over year. So I guess that's my first question.
It's generally based on the revised budget.
So, so we're really more than two and a half percent year over, from annual meeting to annual meeting?
Well, it's not the, it's, it's not the individual lines necessarily. It's the budget as a whole.
Right, the budget as a whole. Well, fine, I, I guess I made my point. Yeah, the, the, a couple of other questions. Does the projected reduction in debt payment that you had, Ian, reflect the funds approved at the November special fall town meeting for street repairs?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And, and the other comment I want to make, and I seem to be broken record on this, is one of the areas that it's killing us, the eight percent increase every year, is the retirement board. And I know we had a discussion about it. You called somebody, and they said, nobody's ever done it, don't even worry about it. I, we, we can't continue with an eight percent increase every year. I think we need to take a hard look at it. I don't care that nobody's ever done it. I think we ought to, if nothing else, try to be the first people to do it. Or if nothing else, create a two-tiered retirement system, one for existing employees who are in the Hampton County system, and another for any new employees. We've been hiring new employees every year, only because it'll be a while, but at some point, it'll break the Hampton County back. The last, at our last meeting, we got a report, and everybody saw that, of PRIM, which is the Public Retirement Board in Massachusetts, reporting record revenue and growth in investments. Retirements through the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board are invested through PRIM, but after they take their local share, their expenses, they come back and tell us they're not making enough money, and they have to increase our fees eight percent every year. If we were to cut them out and invest ourselves with our new employees in PRIM, we'd be making these record stock market earnings and growth for our, for our employees. I just think that continuing to throw up our hands and saying, well, nobody does it, we're stuck, eight percent is a killer for this budget. And if, and if this was two percent or two and a half percent instead of eight percent, it would put a lot easier burden on our ability to pay teachers and firefighters and police officers, but we're spending a ton of money on a system that we do not at all control, and seem to have thrown up our hands and saying, well, woe is us, that's the way it goes. I truly believe there's a different system, there's a better system, and we've got to find that system where it's going to drive the town of Long Meadow into a very, very difficult financial position.
Yeah, to Mark's point, I guess, maybe it's a question of Mark. So you're making good points, but I don't, like, no one, I don't know who's throwing their hands up. I mean, no one on the, we, on this board, I don't, I think we're all in agreement. I mean, we've been, you've been on the board, what, seventeen years now? And we've seen this go up, up, and up, and up, and here you are seventeen later, years later, still saying that, and you're acting like we're all throwing our hands up? Like, let's, I'm happy to do a study, so I'd support that.
Well, we directed the, you know, the, our CFO to look at it, and he came back and said, you know, you called somebody at the state, you called somebody, whatever, and the report was, it can't be done.
No, I mean, reject. It can be done, you need an act of the legislature. And this board, not necessarily this board, but there was a conversation, and no one wanted to pursue special legislation. If you want to do that, we're happy to prepare language for you to endorse, and we send off to Boston. Whether or not an act of the legislature happens is a whole other question.
And people need to understand, the Hampton County Retirement Board is extraordinarily well-connected politically, and have stopped other actions on the board. But I'm thinking, like I said, why, why must all of our future employees be, be receiving their retirement benefits through this board? You know, why can't we as a town set up a two-tiered system? Why can't we think outside the box and say, you know, if we can't beat them this way, just avoid them another way? And that's the kind of thing, Dan, that I.
That's, that's fine. It's a home rule petition is what it sounds like, right?
Well, home rule petition would be.
Mark, you've been on the board seventeen years, and we're, we're still dealing with the same issue, so.
So is it my fault, Dan?
So you're blaming everybody else.
No, I'm not blaming everybody else.
Have we ever brought a home rule petition in seventeen years to address this? I haven't seen one, and I've been in town for a very long time.
I, I hear you, Dan. The point is, I'm not, I'm not convinced a home rule petition is, is the only solution. I think that there's alternatives, like I said, to go around it instead of go through it. I mean, fighting the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board, and I did it for a couple of years, is extraordinarily difficult in the, in the legislature. They have a strong political, you know, action and group, and the, you know, like I said, if, if people wanted to sit back and say, it's eight percent increase, and we'll take care of it, that's fine, but we have to realize that an eight percent increase on this, you know, very large expense, it's four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars a year, is, really impacts us dramatically.
Yeah, I think last year, when we talked about this, we all did want to look into other options. I think Ian did a lot of work looking into other options, and we did hit this, you know, this kind of dead end with this special legislation, and we did have this discussion, decided not to pursue that. But Mark, if you have other ideas, then we can talk about that. We can pursue other options, like let's, you know, I think everyone's open to this, because I don't think anyone thinks that this is sustainable. But let's be constructive, and let's offer ideas, and then talk about maybe how we can actually pursue those ideas.
One thing we'll do is, we'll, we need to look back at the originating documents on when Long Meadow joined Hampton County Retirement, figure out what that says, because I don't know if that locks us into continuing this way in perpetuity, or if there is an out where new employees could go to a different route. So let's take it step by step. We'll, we'll look at that first, and then if we can use, put new hires in a different system, then we need to talk about what that looks like, and, and the phasing in of that. So we'll, we'll get back to you once we know at least that answer. And if you want to give us some direction on whether or not you do want to entertain special legislation, let us know, so we can get working on something.
Great, thank you, Lynn. Okay, anything else? All right, so don't think that we have anything to vote on there, but we will be voting on the calendar at our next meeting. So next on our agenda is our goals discussion. So for folks listening at home, a couple of months ago, the Select Board met with a facilitator, and we talked, had a, had a great discussion about our goals, both in the short term and in the long term. And attached to the agenda are documents that outline what some of these goals are, and so they encompass everything from looking at upgrading EV chargers, to looking at how we can reuse buildings like the community house and town hall, to our fiber internet work. And there have been instances in the past when the Select Board has met with a facilitator, but I don't think that it was ever a conversation or a process like this, and this was something that I think was long overdue, and when I became chair, Lynn proposed this as an idea, and I said that we should absolutely do this. And I, I hope that the Select Board felt the same way that I did, that it helped give us focus on what was possible and what we should be focusing on in the short and the long term. And I think even during, during that discussion, it helped clarify a lot of our priorities. It also helped us rule out some things that were kind of, you know, kind of sticking around that had, had been on the back of our minds, and just gave us more focus. So we would like to take a vote to officially adopt these goals, but I also want to just, you know, open it up to the rest of the Select Board, or to Lynn, you know, if you want to add anything or make any comments about our, our goals and the process that we engaged in.
And these weren't in any specific order?
Uh, no. They're, this is not showing in priority.
All right. I would only add that I agree. I thought it was a very useful session for all of us to kind of talk very frankly about what the priorities are, what the needs and wants are in the town, and I think the list is good. I'm particularly very interested in what we're going to do with our surfeit of town buildings, like the community house, the town hall, and the old town hall, like you mentioned. So there's a lot of really important things on this list.
Great, and yeah, and the facilitator that we met with is very experienced in town government, holding many different positions in different towns for thirty years, and has also done this work as a facilitator with other select boards as well. So he was a, you know, very useful, and also provided a lot of knowledge and expertise.
Yeah, just, just a few things, and the other goals that I, I think are more important and that I would like to move up, I'm not sure, I guess that would be in our actual goals, but I, I think the public shade trees, I, I think we need to do some more thinking on that, similar to what we did for paving, where we can come up with some bigger ideas, think big picture on that. I know at the end of my street, there's a bunch of trees that's got delivered that are to go in on, on Farmington, along where the old construction was, and it's, everyone's really excited about it. And that's a big part of the maintenance that we have to do, is looking at old trees and putting in new ones. Also, long-term budgeting, something we talked about, where we can get a better idea of where we're looking at in the next three, five years, something like that. We, I mean, we generally know where things are going, but I think other, other folks might want to get an idea. And, and also the charter, a charter review, it's something, I think that fiscal year 2027 is a good idea, but I, I just thought it was interesting juxtaposed against one of the emails we got on our agenda, saying, hey, why don't you change your form of town government? Which is, we, every town meeting, we hear that from people. I, I think I heard more this time around than others, but I, if people want to do it, you know, we can have a charter review committee, and they, they can talk about it. Because whenever anybody asks me, well, how can I vote from home? I say, change the charter. And I'd like to give people the opportunity to actually do that if they want. I don't know. I, I have a lot, I have a ton of thoughts on our form of town government, but I guess that isn't the right place, but it is something that I think we should keep on the, on the agenda.
Yeah, and I think to just kind of give the public insight into that discussion, we are taking a look at some of those remaining charter updates that were never implemented, and we'll move on those in the new year. But in talking about a bigger charter review, where we're, you know, having a charter committee or, you know, another group, we did decide that it would be good to do it in FY 2027, because that'd be ten years after the last charter review, and thought that that would be an appropriate amount of time for us to engage in that again. So we also wanted, we also thought that in this process, it was important to identify those things and name them, so that, you know, no matter who's on the Select Board, and if things change, that some of these goals in the future are set out, and people can have a referral to it, can reference it, and also can understand maybe why certain projects were, or, yeah, projects were kind of pushed out, or, you know, thought to be taken, thought it would be better to be taken up at a different time. Dan?
One of the things I, I didn't see on here, and I'm sure we probably talked about it at, at our meeting, was the hot topic of trash and recycling. I know that obviously came up at, at town meeting, and I know I personally had a lot of questions about it, I think, Josh, you did as well. So when the contract is in place, I mean, we're going to have to sit down, have open forums, talk amongst the, the Select Board, and, you know, find the best way forward, because I know there's a lot of questions, and we need to listen to the residents, and this is something that I think we're going to see a lot of in the, in the coming months. And we have a contract for five years, so I mean, there's, there's only so much that we can probably really realistically do, but I think we need to listen to the residents and then come together and try to come up with a rollout that makes most sense for residents under the constraints that we have. So I think that's probably something that we should be focused on talking about a little bit more in the coming months.
Mark?
One of the things that I didn't see on this list that I think needs to be there is. One of the things that I didn't see on this list that I think needs to be there is, and it, and it may be part of the middle school building issue, is what do we do with Glenbrook? And, you know, I, I mean, I can go on with depth forever and ever, but, but part of the sale, I think, if I can use that word, of a middle school project, and Josh, you're on it, is, you know, we can offset some of the cost or we can do, you know, down the road, here's the plan for the, for the, where Glenbrook Middle School is and, or that land. And, you know, there's all kinds of issues because they're essential sports fields right now. But nevertheless, it's one more unused building. And we have in here, you know, what are we going to do with the town halls? But to me, the Glenbrook Middle School and having that in a plan, I think needs to be pretty much a 2026 plus priority or 2026 priority.
I, I would say that's even one of our highest priorities because one of the things, as part of the sale, one. But two, we talked about this at our strategy session that the, the school committee has to give the town, us, the school, the Glenbrook site, and then we have to decide what we want to do with it.
And the water tower site. They still control the water tower site.
Yeah. Well, they'll pry, pry that from their hands, I guess.
No, but, but that, but nothing's going to happen unless it gets on somebody's list of things to prioritize.
Yeah, but so, but I, I think that one of the things we talked about at our meeting was for our vote next fall, which we found out recently is going to be earlier than we thought, probably a special town meeting in September, that we should, at that point, we should be able to say, and the school committee has said they'll give us back Glenbrook, and here's our idea for it. It doesn't have to be 100% solid, but I think that is something really important to look into now. For, and so that people have a pretty good idea at least of what's going to happen if we have one school at, at Williams.
Yeah, I agree. So I mean, I, I think we can add that to this year's goal list. So FY 2025, yeah, I mean, if, we're going to be having a special town meeting in September.
Can I ask, how would we, yeah, so let's say, you know, we wanted to form a, a committee of some kind to look at all, or would it be Lynn and the town administrators come in with ideas that we consider? How, what is usually, how do you usually go about this? For example, if, like, people had ideas like, hey, let's take the Upper Plateau and make it, invite developers to submit plans for over 55 housing and, for example, keep the fields at, at the bottom? Like, how do people come up, present their ideas and how can we evaluate them?
Andrew, you said on my ideas, so I think-
It's a common idea because I think these are, that's just one suggestion that I think is a good one personally, but we should of course consider everything.
Yeah, so first, what I think I would do, and the assistant town manager and I have already talked about this, but what we would do formally is I would ask Corinne to research the actual property itself, figure out ownership and any sort of restrictions that might be in place and what the actual square footage is of potential buildable area. And write up a formal opinion on what the zoning is currently and what can be developed under that current zoning. And then some ideas on if there were a zone change, what that would look like, that type of thing. And just kind of give us somewhere to start. And then that could come back to you and we could have a discussion. We, we could start there.
Yeah, that'd be great. I think that's-
Let's direct you to do that if possible. I mean, I think that would be-
Yeah, that'd be a great place to start. And then also, just whatever needs to be done for the process for the school committee to transfer ownership.
Yes.
And getting that figured out too is important.
Okay. Anyone else?
So what I think I'll do is we could take everyone's feedback and then edit this live document and bring it back to a future meeting to adopt. Because as, as you know from the session, it was structured as the goals that we already had, some were closed out, some were moved over because they're ongoing processes. They don't just end. It's work that's just always ongoing. And then there was that list of extra goals that we kind of talked about at the end of that session that I took notes on that, you know, if you want to implement some of that stuff in there, there's categories already in our goals document that meet some of those specific conversations that were had. So we can always, you know, add things in as a draft and you guys can vote to approve it at another meeting.
Great.
Can we get an update on, you know, regarding the disposition of the town hall and the community house and the old town hall? We're waiting for a study. What is the status of that?
Yeah, the RFP, it's actually going to be a request for qualifications. It has not gone out yet. We, it, it's in draft form and then we recently had a meeting regarding police station and fire station and the need for an emergency generator and where that needs to get placed in the parking lot. And so then that snowballed into the, how we use the parking lot and the driveways at town hall and community house for police and fire use. And so then we agreed that we'd go back and look at that draft RFQ to make sure we had appropriate language in there for a designer to come in and make sure that whatever they talk about related to community house or town hall takes into account the use of that area for public safety purposes. So it's very close to being able to go out. I'd say it's going to be released in the next two weeks.
Okay, thanks. Anything else? Then we'll make those edits and talk about this again at a future meeting and take a vote. So we will move on to our one-day liquor license application.
I'll move we approve a one-day liquor license application for an event for December 19th, 2024 for the Long Meadow Adult Community Center Fund as well as a event on December 5th, 2024 for the Long Meadow Adult Center and Community Fund.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, thank you. And any comments on correspondence that we received?
Yeah, just, on the, the town meeting format email, just wanted to make sure I wasn't making light of it. I, I really think it is a, a serious issue that our town has discussed. And there's, if anybody wants to talk to me about it, I'm happy to, happy to. It's a, it's a good topic, but I, I think it is important and I wasn't being facetious. People, the nice thing about our former government is that it's representational and even down to this. If people want to change it, they really can. So if that's what people want to do, we can. Just a comment that, that, don't underestimate what it, you know, we talked about a charter committee and a charter committee. It's not, it's Charter Commission, very, very circumspect by the, the state. Who must be on it, what they must cover, how long it takes, what votes there are, how people are required. I'm not saying you can't do it. We can do it. We did it 10 years ago and it may very well be time to, to do it again. But it's not something that's undertaken lightly and frankly, once it begins, it, it's outside the venue of the Select Board, which is fine. That's what it, what it should be. It becomes part of the Charter Commission and they present their findings to the town and the town votes it up or votes it down, as they did here, as they did in East Long Meadow and other places.
My, my father was on the charter, the most recent Charter Review Commission that East Long Meadow did and I could not believe how much work it took. It's, it's unreal.
Good luck to the folks here in 2027. All right. Anything else?
Sounds like Josh wants to be on it.
Now I'll talk about it. It's different.
All right. I move to adjourn. Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.